Well, what we can do is, I can bring it up as a fact. So we can get these.
Oh, yes.
Matt's on the thing, right?
Say again?
Matt. Matt Halter. Okay, yeah, he's there.
Okay. First of all, I would like to adjourn the special meeting that was held prior to right now and announce that there were no reportable actions taken. So I am calling to order the regular meeting of the Ross Town Council Thursday, September 11, 2025. Has the agenda been posted? Are there any changes to the agenda?
No.
Thank you. Number three, council member reports on meetings and conversations.
As you know, there are towns with the people shut up in front of the post office for members of the town come to sit and talk. Everybody comes in and has questions or wants to ask some questions about the new laws. So we actually have conversations with people who really give us good ideas.
Could give us good ideas and good suggestions. And what we're going to do is we're going to write these up every time. Some of those of us who are going to be sitting in front of the post office and the community gives us good ideas, we're going to write them up so that we have a record of them. And then what we will promise to do as a council is review these on a regular basis and then report out, most likely every six months or at some time sequence, so that you know that we're really listening. And I find it so helpful. People have great suggestions and ideas, so thank you.
Does anyone else have any reports on conversations or meetings that they've had? Ben?
And let me just, I don't, but let me just clarify this agenda item. It's meant for ex-party communications on items on the agenda. At the end of the meeting week, we also have another agenda item on communications and meetings you've attended.
Thank you for that clarification. Number four, open time for public expression. This is for matters not on our agenda, and it is limited to three minutes per speaker. And our clerk, Cindy Martel, will be timing you. Ross?
Thank you, Mayor, Town Council. Ross Asselstein of San Anselmo. I apologize for coming into your town hall. I said the same things in San Anselmo. We're, as I've said before, we're kind of twinned with this flood issue. Some of you might be aware that I drafted 60 cartoons on the issue because it's that easy to poke fun of it, and it's also that real. I can suggest that my last cartoon, August 19, had 23 pages appended to it that went to the county council and to the head of finance. And it has problems. I went all the way back to read documents from '63, '71, '83 in terms of the fee that exists as an item fee. There's a problem, and that they, I believe the flood district doesn't know they're out of money already. It's obscure, but I found it. And they're trying to use money from a prior obligation to fit current obligations. What does that mean? I believe that San Anselmo and Ross should just draw a little line in the sand and say to the flood district, "Don't come back to us and ask for us to put something on the agenda if you don't have the money to do the project." Why have divisive meetings, people in here talking about their property, crazy acquisitions of what's right or wrong if they don't even have the money to do the project? It is, it is a problem. And it's a very divisive issue in the community. It'd be best if they sort out their own financial house before they come back and tell us about engineering. Last comment is, I said, I spoke at supervisors, and I said, "I hope that the district staff can see their way to understanding." The Board of Supervisors, if they report, if the district staff reports to Board of Supervisors and says, "This project doesn't make sense," the Board of Supervisors should see that as success and integrity, not failure. What we really need out of district staff is a lot of honesty about risks and rewards in this process. And right now, they're just advocates, as I've said before, as opposed to fiduciaries. I think we'd see much different reports from them if we knew what their budget was and whether or not what the risks were to the towns. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi there. Let me get to my notes. I gotta be proper. I'm wearing my apron today because I spilled coffee on me, so excuse my appearance. My name is Amy Dean. Good evening, everyone. I'm reading from my phone, which I hate, but you know me, I talk a lot. And if I don't stay focused, I'm gonna lose it. So my name is Amy Dean, and I'm from Crown and Crumpet Tea Salon. And I'm delighted to talk to all of you this evening about a wonderful idea that's bubbling up amongst us Ross business community. As many of you know, Ross is a unique and fabulous town with an assortment of small shops, restaurants, and other types of businesses. We believe it's time to bring everyone together for a truly special community celebration right on our main street. And frankly, we could all really use it. I hate to say it, but all of us struggle in different ways to get attention and business throughout the year. And this type of event could really help us all. As we move into the fourth quarter after such a quiet, slow summer, we really would appreciate a boost in all of our businesses. And what better way to do that than with an event that gets the whole town involved? Within the next eight weeks, we'd love to host a street fair that closes a small section of Poplar from Tony Tudo's Pizza to Busy Bees for a late afternoon, early evening of food, music, and assortment of fun activities. Imagine families strolling through, enjoying a cup of tea, a slice of pizza, or a treat from one of the many restaurants, including the New Mexican one that's about to open, and listening to some live local musicians and really celebrating what makes Ross such a charming place to live and be part of. To make this happen, we're kindly asking for the town of Ross for support. We'll need a permit to temporarily close the street and a little help with any additional costs that come up, things like safety barriers, signage, maybe a few other logistics. We truly believe that this event will not only boost local morale, but also highlight the wonderful businesses that make Ross special. With your support, we can create a memorable day for everyone in our community. Thank you so much for considering it, and we can't wait to work together to make it happen. And remember, number five, foster and strengthen community involvement. And that starts in our business downtown. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Amy. Anybody else for public comment? Anyone online? There are no raised hands online. Okay, great. All right. Next is the proclamation recognizing Kelly Reed as the Town Treasurer since 1998. Would you like to come up here, Kelly?
Yes, I would. It's nice to be back in town hall once again with nice, comfortable chairs. Remember, you're the back of the 1998, the 1998 year old council. Here is Ross Town Treasurer. I'll try to keep my comments short. It's very difficult to keep my mouth shut.
So I have the honor of, I have the honor of reading a proclamation honoring you, Kelly Reed, for 27 years of dedicated service as Town Treasurer and a lifetime of commitment to the town of Ross. Whereas Kelly Reed was first elected to the Ross Town Council in April of 1990 and served two consecutive terms through April 1998. And whereas during his tenure on the town council, Kelly served twice as mayor of the town of Ross, first in 1993 and then again in 1997, and was elected by his peers as president of the Marin County Council of Mayors and council members in 1997. And whereas, following his service on the town council, Kelly was appointed as the Town Treasurer of Ross at the May 14, 1998 town council meeting, originally being told the role would be only for a few weeks. And whereas Kelly has honorably and joyfully served the town of Ross as its Town Treasurer for the past 27 years, offering fiscal stewardship, integrity, and unwavering dedication to the community he so clearly loves. And whereas Kelly's deep-rooted service to the town is a testament to his commitment to civic duty and exemplifies the spirit of volunteerism and public service. And whereas Kelly celebrates his birthday on October 19, and he will be turning 84 years young this year.
It's actually 30, 34 years old.
It's a typo.
Must have been a typo.
And whereas Kelly's legacy in Ross is not only marked by his professional contributions, but by his warm presence, generosity of time, and enduring pride in his family, including his wife, Mary, and their three sons and their wives and seven beloved grandchildren. Now, therefore, the Town of Ross Council does hereby express its deepest appreciation and gratitude to Kelly Reed for his outstanding and selfless service as Town Treasurer and for his dedication of leadership and dedication to the town of Ross. Kelly, thank you so much.
Thank you, Reed. Thank you all. I really appreciate this. Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor Pro Tem Elizabeth Robbins, and council members Terry Darling, Mr. Kircher, and Mr. Salter. I really want you to know what an honor and privilege it's been for me to not only serve on the Ross Town Council for eight years and being the mayor a couple of times and the other items you mentioned, but also I want to thank Laura Thomas, Mayor Sewell, rest in peace, as the town clerk at that time back in 1998, April 1998. She said, "Hey, Kelly, you know, our treasurer left town and moved up to Washington State, one of those islands off the state of Washington, and it'll just be a treasurer for a couple of weeks, you know, while we get a new town treasurer." I said, "Well, that sounds like a good idea." I needed to get appointed by the town council, which I think occurred in the month of May of 1998. So I have served for that long period of time, but they've certainly changed the whole order of business that a town treasurer has to do because I remember being at, coming down here on a Saturday or Sunday and making copies of all the checks on the copy machine and then getting those checks in order and delivering those checks over to the Wells Fargo Bank in San Anselmo and making that deposit. And then, then from time to time, I would call my good friends up at Local Agency Investment Fund in Sacrotomato, Sacramento, California. And they would say, because we had our monies that came in, we would send them up to Leif, and they would be in Leif for a while until the town mayor or the town manager at that time would say, "We need some money in the town treasury to pay our demands." So I would then transfer the money back down again. So that's what I did for about that 27 years. And that was like a piece of cake for me and loved every minute of it. And then one time, we had a Fourth of July parade, and they made me the grand marshal. And Laura Thomas gave me a photograph of myself with dollar bills on it as the Town Treasurer to be the grand marshal of the parade with my, I still have the signs I found underneath my bed at home, covered with dust now, but it says, "Grand Marshal Kelly Reed, Ross Town Treasurer." So that gave me a sense of pride and loveliness of living in our town here since July 15th of 1986, I think it was, Mary? Is that, am I right there? And when I would introduce my family, I would call all my sons the Little Nippers. I was on the Ross Town Council with Peter Berry and Charlie Goodman and John Scott and Mary Brown, et cetera, and always referred to my sons as the Little Nippers. So Charlie Goodman gave me that nipper dog, the RCA dog, that was called Nipper at the time when they were advertising that dog, so. See, I told you I would talk too much.
Thank you. I take that. This is for you. Sure.
Okay, one, two, three.
I don't have a good sign.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jeffrey Coon, Jeffrey Coon would like to congratulate you on being the new Town Treasurer. Have a great time doing it. Go up everybody. Thank you very much, everybody for coming.
Thank you, Kelly. Next is item number six, the proclamation celebrating Marin Art and Garden Center's 80th anniversary. And I have the honor of reading this to Iris and Tom, if you'd like to come up. Whereas 2025 marks the 80th anniversary of the founding of Marin Art and Garden Center, a remarkable milestone for this rare cherished public garden. Whereas the Community Cultural Center is a living tribute to the resilience of a few dedicated visionary women who in 1945 were instrumental in helping start the conservation movement in Marin. With this group of women leaders at the helm and bolstered by the support of various Marin art and horticulture organizations, Marin Art and Garden was founded and incorporated on August 6, 1945. Whereas Marin Art and Garden Center has given generations of families and children a place to play, learn, experience the outdoors, appreciate conservation, enjoy performances, plant seeds, create and enjoy art, commemorate milestones, and come together as a community. Whereas as a nonprofit, Marin Art and Garden Center, its board of trustees, executive team, and community members cultivate an environment where art and gardens flourish, conservation is championed, history is celebrated, and community bonds are strengthened. Whereas the gardens offer visitors from the Bay Area and beyond a place for quiet reflection, hands-on learning, nature exploration, community gatherings and celebrations. And whereas the gardens are free and open to the public seven days a week. Whereas without interruption, Marin Art and Garden Center has served the community needs with its various programs and resources. Now, therefore, the Ross Town Council does hereby recognize Marin Art and Garden Center in honor of its 80th anniversary and expresses gratitude for its ongoing efforts to strengthen, enhance, and enrich our community. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Do you want to say anything?
Want to say something? Well, we'd just like to thank the town council for this recognition. We're very appreciative of all the help and guidance we've gotten from the staff, and we're very proud of the partnerships that we've been able to develop with town, community members, and our neighbors. And we appreciate this very much. Thank you.
He would love that. With you. Of course, you have to be in the picture.
They don't want a picture of me.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Number seven is to welcome David Kelly, project manager. Krista?
Great, thank you. David, if we could ask you to come on up to the podium, please. I'd like to formally introduce David Kelly to the town council and to the community. And David is the town's new part-time project manager charged with implementation of the town's adopted facility master plan. David is a seasoned local government leader with more than 30 years of experience spanning the public and private sectors. Most recently, he served the city of Cloverdale in northern Sonoma County from 2016 to '24, serving as city manager until his retirement last December. During his tenure in Cloverdale, David guided the city through major milestones, the adoption of a certified housing element, acquisition of key open space properties, design of a new police station, and voter approval of a local sales tax measure. He also strengthened the city's long-term fiscal health, growing the general fund reserves while advancing community safety and infrastructure. Prior to Cloverdale, David served 12 years with the town of Windsor in leadership roles. One of his projects there was the completion of a fire station project designed to serve the growing west side of the town. Earlier in his career, David served as planning and building director for Calusa County and worked in the private sector, providing planning, environmental, and land development services to local governments and developers throughout the Sacramento Valley. He holds an MBA from Sonoma State University and a BA in economics with a minor in planning from California State University Chico. He has also completed graduate coursework in planning and environmental studies. David is a longtime Sonoma County resident. He lives with his wife in a 120-year-old home they are restoring to its original historic character. David has been learning about the community and starting work on the Civic Center project since he started working for the town earlier this summer. Later this evening, he will give the town council a status report on his efforts to date. So happy that David is here assisting us and look forward to working with him throughout the year. David, did you want to say a few words?
I just want to say thank you, Krista, for the wonderful introduction. And good evening, council members. Mayor McMillan, Vice Mayor Robbins, and Councilmember Salter. I know you're attending remotely. It's a real pleasure to be back in front of a city council, a town council again. And I look forward to the presentation tonight and providing an update on the facilities master plan. So thank you.
Thank you, David. Well done. Item number eight is welcome Elena Kurakina, Senior Accountant. Krista?
Yes, we have a small team here, so it's super fun to be able to do two introductions. But Elena, may I ask you to go up to the podium, please? Thank you. I have a few words to say about Elena. She was born and lived abroad. She studied mathematics and physics at a technical university and was going to be an engineer. Two years after starting her engineering education, she made the decision to return to her love of music and entered a different university to study music, receiving a master's degree in fine arts. Once she came to the United States, she went back to her roots in the mathematical field and started her studies at Santa Rosa JC, right? Is that what, SRJC? Receiving a MBA from Regent University as well. She has worked in accounting management field since 2013 with careers at the town of Tiburon and the county of Marin. She comes to the town of Ross with skills and background in the business administration field. Elena and her husband have two grown sons. The oldest works for SpaceX and is building and launching rockets in space. The youngest works as an engineer in the same field of work. He is also a swimmer and participated in the last two Olympic trials. And a little bird has told me that Elena also swims very early in the morning before she comes to work. On her time off, she loves to hike in Marin County with her husband. So we are super lucky to have Elena. She's been a joy to work with since she arrived. And Elena, would you like to say a few words?
Yes. Thank you very much, Krista, for such a great introduction of me. It's a pleasure to be here. It's very nice here.
Welcome, Elena. Thank you. Welcome. Number nine is a presentation from Branson School's Youth Advocacy Committee on nicotine. And I just wanted to remind the council that we're not taking a vote or having a discussion. We're just receiving the presentation tonight. And if two council members later at the end of the meeting want to place this on the agenda for further discussion, we can do that. So welcome, Branson. The floor is yours.
It'll be just a moment while we pull up their presentation.
We have some items for you. Are we allowed to give these to you or afterwards?
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Kimberly DeLeone.
My name is Diana Garcia.
And my name is Rhett Crowe.
I'm Raven Quilling. And we are here to present Keeping Ross Tobacco-Free: A Policy Solution. You can turn the slide. So first, I'd like to begin with sharing our agenda. We will present about the Youth Advocacy Committee, nicotine use in Marin, as well as tobacco retail environment, Ross, a tobacco-free town, and finally, our proposal. So the Youth Advocacy Committee is made up of high school students from Marin County who are devoted to fostering a positive change in our community. Our slogan is "Not About Us Without Us" because we believe that our voice matters when we are talking about issues that we youth face. Some of our goals is to work with local organizations, policymakers, and citizens to raise awareness about youth nicotine use and solutions to protect community health. No worries. Okay, this is good. Some of our values include equity, education, mental and physical health, as well as community health.
Okay, so now we're going to get into most recent data on youth nicotine use in Marin. So our data comes from the California Healthy Kids Survey. It's an anonymous and confidential survey that monitors school climate and student well-being. So this graph shows that vaping rates in Marin are higher than the statewide average, and vaping rates in Marin between 2021 and 2023 were nearly double the California statewide average. And we don't have any data from 2019 to 2021 due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Okay, so this next graph shows that like vaping, cigarette smoking rates are double, or are higher than the California statewide average. And most recent data also shows that youth cigarette smoking rates have increased and are increasing. This graph shows self-reported perceived difficulty of obtaining vape products for seventh, ninth, and eleventh graders. You can see that 25% of Marin seventh graders said that it was easy to obtain vape products. Comparatively, 62% of ninth graders and 70% of 11th graders said that it was easy to obtain vape products. So this means that Marin needs to take actionable steps to limit youth access to these vape products.
Part of the reason why Marin vaping rates are particularly concerning is because vapes have significantly more nicotine in them than traditional cigarettes. In fact, a single e.l.f. bar has the same amount of nicotine in it as nearly 600 cigarettes. Next slide, please. Now that we've seen just how much nicotine is packed into vapes compared to cigarettes, let's take a step back and look at where these products are being sold and why the tobacco retail environment plays such a big role in shaping youth tobacco use. Next slide, please. Tobacco retailer density means how many stores in a specific area sell tobacco products. When there are more tobacco retailers, youth are more likely to see ads and promotions for these products. Furthermore, with increased retailer density, youth are more likely to be exposed to others using these products, and they see the behavior more often, which can normalize it. Researchers from the National Institutes of Health have found that increased tobacco retailer density does lead to increased smoking rates in adults and youth. Next slide, please. It's no surprise that communities across California are limiting where tobacco can be sold to help reduce youth consumption. As of 2024, 126 municipalities across California regulate tobacco retailer density in some way. Furthermore, 107 jurisdictions across California restrict the proximity of tobacco sales around youth-populated areas such as schools, childcare facilities, and parks.
So it's clear that retail density plays a major role in youth access and use. And fortunately, Ross is starting from a strong position as the town currently has no tobacco retailers.
So in Ross, there are a number of protections that already exist for folks around the sale and exposure to tobacco and nicotine products. So Ross has smoke-free indoor and outdoor public spaces, which is really amazing and awesome. Ross also has 100% smoke-free multi-unit housing, and Ross requires a tobacco retail license in order to sell tobacco. However, as Diana mentioned, there aren't any tobacco retailers in Ross, which is great. But there isn't any barrier to entry should tobacco retailers want to enter the community of Ross.
With this in mind, we are presenting a simple policy proposal to protect future generations. Next slide. Our goal is clear. It is to keep Ross a tobacco-free community. That means that we must protect retailers, prevent retailers from coming into Ross. One of the ways that we hope to do this is to amend Ross Ordinance Number 699, which formally prohibits the sale of tobacco in Ross. In addition, this has already been established in over 22 jurisdictions, including Beverly Hills and Manhattan Beach. Next slide. Some of the policy benefits includes protecting future residents from Ross, particularly youth, from the harms of tobacco. In addition, we hope to promote a healthy community and raise awareness about the harms of tobacco and nicotine while encouraging current users to reduce their use. And finally, we hope to set a positive example to our neighboring communities.
Our ask is that the Ross Town Council prioritize the health of Ross residents and amend Ross Ordinance Number 699 to formally end the sale of tobacco in Ross. Thank you for your time, and if there are any questions, we would be happy to answer them now. Thank you.
Does any council member have any questions? Thank you so much for coming and presenting. You're all so impressive as high school students. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the mayor's report. September marks a month of significant milestones. We've already heard about Kelly Reed and the Marin Art and Garden Center's 80th anniversary. Finally, our dear Winship Park neighbor, Alice Reeve, is turning 100 on September 27. Alice spent 44 years volunteering at Marin Art and Garden Center and was also a national tennis champion. She remains very active, walking her two small dogs twice a day and cheerfully engaging with neighbors. On other fronts, Diane and Russ Rudden have graciously volunteered to lead the formation of a firewise neighborhood on the Lagunitas side of town, which will be called the Lagunitas Road Firewise Group. Others are forming a firewise group encompassing the Laurel Grove neighborhood and including the Barber-Winship Firewise Neighborhood Group. Soon, all Ross residents will be part of a firewise group. If you are interested in helping the Rudden's with the Lagunitas Road Firewise Group, please let me know. Last week, I spoke at the League of Women Voters to commemorate the 19th Amendment giving women the right to vote in 1920. I reflected on how far women have come, including in Marin County, with seven of the 11 current mayors being women and Supervisor Barbara Boxer rising to the House of Representatives and then the Senate. In the early 1980s, Supervisor Boxer spearheaded establishing the Ross Valley paramedics in Ross, where it remains today, working with Ross Councilmembers Gary Scales and Peter Breckus. We thank them for their vision and commitment to our town. On September 5th, more than 300 residents attended the newly reimagined Ross Town Dinner. It was a wonderful way to reconnect, meet new neighbors, and spend time together at the lovely Marin Art and Garden Center. Thanks to town staff for creating such a magical evening and Crown and Crumpet and Marche Restaurant for generously providing delicious treats. The following day was the evacuation drill and Ember Stomp, the fourth annual free wildfire festival at the Marin Civic Center, sponsored by Marin Wildfire and FireSafe Marin. A record 1,000 Marin residents participated in the evacuation drill, and attendance at the event was approximately 6,000, the most ever. Town Manager Johnson and Chief Pata visited me and our displays at the Marin Master Gardeners booth. I was deep in the mulch. I look forward to seeing you at Live on the Common Friday, September 19, and at the First Aid Training Saturday, September 27. Thanks to RPWA for sponsoring and organizing both events. Finally, please come to the Firewise Educational Event Monday, September 29, 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. at Marin Art and Garden Center. You will learn more about Zone Zero, the science, resources, and inspiration. Mark Brown, Executive Officer of Marin Wildfire; Nicole Marcucci, Ross Valley Fire Department Wildfire Preparedness Coordinator; and April Owens, a fire-smart landscaping designer, will speak and answer your questions. FireSafe Marin will be available with information. Chief Pata and Town Manager Johnson will help you sign up for Alert Marin. Thank you. Council, yes?
Excuse me, Mayor. There was, there's a public speaker on Zoom that wanted to make a comment about the presentation from the students. That's okay. So is it okay if we ask for that? Okay, thank you. Mr. Ma, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor McMillan and Ross Town Council members. My name is John Ma. I'm the 2018 President of the San Francisco Marine Medical Society. I'm a general surgeon at Marin Health Medical Center, and I'm pleased to speak on behalf of the medical society and strong support of the Branson School Youth Academy Committee presentation this evening. Our support letter has been submitted. I personally applaud the students' courage and intelligence to present this information before the council today. We urge you to agendize a model ordinance to end tobacco product sales in Ross for a future town council meeting. The California Medical Association passed policy in the 1980s urging an end to all tobacco product sales in our state. And the American Medical Association has existing policy to bring an end to cigarette sales across America. In these challenging times in tobacco control at the federal level, this visionary action can serve as a source of inspiration to reinvigorate efforts all across our nation to achieve the tobacco endgame. Thank you for your wonderful leadership on behalf of the citizens of Ross. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item number 11, Council Committee and Liaison Reports. Anyone? We do have Chris Martin here as our Town of Ross liaison to Flood Zone 9. Chris?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The Flood Zone 9 Advisory Committee met on August 21. Marin County Public Works Acting Director Chris Blunk and Judd Goodman, the senior civil engineer assigned to the San Anselmo Flood Risk Reduction Project, provided the advisory board with a similar presentation that this council received at its August 14 meeting. As you are aware, the Marin County Flood District has sent to FEMA a COLMAR application for the San Anselmo project, which includes the removal of Building Bridge 3, Building Bridge 2. FEMA will review the county's analysis and potential impacts. County staff is currently meeting individually with San Anselmo and Ross residents that may be impacted with a rise of storm water from the project. They're discussing potential mitigation measures. The county is also sending FEMA a separate COLMAR application for the Corder Madera Flood Risk Management Project, which starts upstream here at the Lagunitas Bridge and ends downstream at the channel, the natural channel in Kenfield, near Kent School. This project includes, of course, the removal of the fish ladder with channel improvements near the Ross Post Office. It also includes building higher floodwalls downstream in the Granton Park neighborhood and includes the removal of portions of the concrete channel in Kenfield, where Barbara Boxer actually chained herself to protest the building of that in 1970. The work actually has begun there. And it's, I encourage you to visit it. There are dozens of earth-moving equipment, dozers and extractors and other things, removing about 575 linear feet of the existing concrete channel to create a more natural earthened channel for improved fish and habitat wildlife, as well as more adaptable conditions for future sea level rise. Flood Zone 9 is scheduled to meet again in October to look at the progress of the various projects. One thing that may slow down, unfortunately, the COLMAR applications is FEMA's staffing has been reduced. And the county is unaware at this point of the time schedule. So Flood Zone 9 will meet on a regular basis to look at the progress. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Number 12, Staff and Community Reports. Is there anyone for the Ross Property Owners Association? Hi, Kelly.
Hi. I know that Jeff had sent you all the calendar of events. Can you hear me? Is that right? They sent you the calendar of events, so I will not repeat all of those because, as you saw, there's a lot going on in our town. But we wanted to thank you to Anthony for all the help with Live on the Common coming up on the 19th and for the previous ones as well. And a big thank you to Public Works team for arranging the additional outlets for the holiday lights on the common that have been installed. That's really going to help with not just the lighting, but not just the holiday lighting, but also for Live on the Common because electricity for those events was an issue. So thank you. Dog waste baskets for the lawn area. We are flexible about location, and they haven't been specified. We're just looking for feedback. So that's where that is. Historical walk plaques, locations. It's going to have locations and information, and that's in process. And then we're still working on the new interior lighting for the post office. So those are the things we're currently working on. Thank you again for a wonderful town dinner.
Thank you, Kelly. Great report. Town Manager Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Good evening. I hope that you were able to attend and enjoy the reimagined Ross Town Dinner that was held last Friday at Magic. We received very positive feedback from residents about the event, and a big thank you goes out to everyone that helped make the event a success, including our partners at Magic and especially the town staff led by our very capable recreation manager, Maureen Borthwick. So thank you, Maureen. Some residents and Chief Pata have recently reported seeing an occasional coyote in Ross. Marin Animal Control, which is operated by Marin Humane Society, suggests that since it is illegal to relocate or harm coyotes, residents could help minimize the coyote population and any aggressive behaviors by the following. Keep your pets indoors in the evening and at night. Secure the lid to your garbage cans and dumpsters. Clean up thoroughly after you grill outside. Do not leave food or water outside, not for your own pets and not for wild animals. Harvest your garden and fruit trees as soon as your vegetables and fruits are ready. Learn and use hazing techniques to scare off coyotes and to discourage them from feeling comfortable around human beings. Techniques include making eye contact with the coyote and acting big, bad, and loud. Take a step forward. Wave your arms around. Throw sticks toward the coyote. Yell and make noise with an air horn or a whistle. Those are all hazing techniques to help us live harmoniously with our coyote friends. And lastly, PG&E has a vegetation management contractor. The company is called Core Tree Care. They are going to be performing work on Sir Francis Drake on the night of Friday, September 26, starting at 8:00 p.m. through the night, and they'll end by Saturday morning at 8:00 a.m. The work involves removing a large unhealthy oak tree that overhangs Sir Francis Drake just north of the Laurel Grove intersection. Due to the hazards of removing the large tree in the right-of-way, a full closure of Sir Francis Drake Boulevard between El Camino Bueno and Laurel Grove Avenue will be required during this time. Through traffic will be detoured down Shady Lane during the road closure. Electronic message signs will be deployed by the contractor with appropriate warnings the week before the closure. The town will send out a town-wide email, e-blasts, early next week informing residents of the closure. And we will provide contact information with an email and phone number for residents to call if there are questions or concerns. So two takeaways here. This is a PG&E project, not the town, so it's PG&E project. And it's going to involve the complete shutdown of Sir Francis Drake Friday, September 26, starting at 8:00 p.m. through the night until 8:00 a.m. the next morning, Saturday. So. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Number 11 is the consent agenda, and there are items A.
Hey, I'm sorry. I just had a question for Krista. Sorry.
Matt, are you, did you get kicked off?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you. We don't see you, though.
Oh, sorry. My video has been off and on.
There you are.
Hi, sorry about that. Just one question for you, Krista. I was wondering if you could just give us an update on the video cameras with the, I just haven't heard in a long time, an update, if you would just share where that stands.
Sure. Councilmember Salter is referring to an item we brought to the council earlier this year to install, not video cameras, to install APLR license plate readers, is what they are.
Yeah, sorry. Yes, exactly.
And in certain locations throughout the town. And we've, I've, the chief and I are representatives of the town attorney's office, and our risk management pool have been working extensively with this particular company. And we have not been able to reach agreement thus far on contract language. So we still persevere, but we are not, it's not ready to be brought back to the council for action. So it is a, it would need, it requires council action, the contract. So we'll bring it back when it's ready.
Okay, and there's no timeline right now?
No, I'm every month because we're trying diligently, but it's, we have not reached agreement yet.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Thank you. The consent agenda, item number 13. There are items A through G. Does any council member wish to pull an item off the consent agenda? Does any member of the public wish to?
I do.
Oh, okay, Matt.
Sorry, it's the item about the grand jury.
Oh, the housing.
Correct. Sorry, I just don't know the number.
13C.
13C?
Thank you, yes.
We'll pull that. Does any member of the public wish to pull an item from the consent agenda? Does any member of the public wish to pull an item from the Consent Agenda?
There are no raised hands.
Great. So, we have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda, items A, B, D, E, F, and G.
So moved.
Second.
Mayor McMillan?
Aye.
Councilmember Dowling?
Aye.
Councilmember Kircher?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Robbins?
Aye.
Councilmember Salter?
Aye.
With a vote of five, the motion passes.
Okay, item 13C, Matt?
Oh, yes, I, I just, if you wouldn't mind, Roberta, just, I think it deserves a little airtime, what the grand jury reported out and sort of where your letter to back to them sort of agrees or disagrees with some of their findings as it relates to our town and our plan.
Sure, Councilmember Salter. So, on June 24, 2025, the Marin County Civil Grand Jury released a report titled "The Worrisome Future of Marin Housing: NIMBY Resistance Takes a Backseat to Economic Reality." The gist of the report is sort of saying that none of the jurisdictions would meet the state-required RENA. That's the units we would need to build by 2031. And all the Marin jurisdictions collaborated on this response. Most are consistent with the findings we agreed to and the findings we disagreed with, along with the recommendations we're implementing and the recommendations we would not. In the staff report, I sort of outlined that while, you know, there are, there's legitimacy that due to financing, developer interest, construction costs, things beyond the town's control, that it would be a challenge to meet RENA. However, you know, for Ross, we have issued 20 building permits since 2023. So, it's a challenge, but it's not entirely unrealistic that we would meet those 111 units. Were there specific findings or recommendations you wanted clarification or a little bit more info on?
Yeah, so one was, first of all, I just wanted you to be able to speak to the fact that we are doing it and that we have issued permits, and we continue to see applications for ADUs, which have been, which was consistent with our plan. So, I just wanted that on the record, that it was, you know, in terms of our plan, we're moving full speed ahead, and we're seeing interest from the community to continue to build these ADUs. So, you know, just wanted to make sure that was recorded. And then the second one was just a little question about the, this issue of what they're asking for, like this accounting or this quarterly reporting, if you just wouldn't mind. Because I know you have to do a certain reporting for the housing department at the state. Is this quarterly more, are they asking for more accounting? Like, what was the objection to some of the sort of requests that the grand jury had?
That is correct. So, Alex and I put together the annual, the APR, the Annual Progress Report for the housing element and also the general plan. I mean, that took us, I can't even estimate how long that took us. So, if we had to report that four times a year, quarterly, that would almost, four times over the work we're doing every year.
Yeah, so it just, it was too cumbersome, what they're asking, and it's not necessary.
That's right. We're already required to do it every year, and we do.
Okay. And then are there any other issues that, in terms of their recommendations that you had, sort of a issue with, besides the accounting and the reporting?
Most of them we're already implementing, so not really.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you. I, I think this is an important topic, and I just, again, I wanted to make sure you, we could have the airtime I think it deserves in the council meeting.
Sure. Thank you for the opportunity.
Ben, do we need to take public comment on, is there any public comment on item number 13C? Any raised hands, Cindy?
No raised hands online.
Great. So, we'll bring it back.
I move we approve Consent Agenda, item 13C.
A second.
Mayor McMillan?
Aye.
Councilmember Dowling?
Aye.
Councilmember Kircher?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Robbins?
Aye.
Councilmember Salter?
Aye.
With a vote of four, five, the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 14, Public Hearing on Planning Projects, Part 1, 34 Shady Lane Design Review, Non-Conformity Permit, Variance, and Town Council Consideration of Adoption of Resolution Number 2537, Approving the Project Subject to Conditions. Alex?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Tonight, the project at 34 Shady Lane is requesting, is seeking Town Council Consideration for Designer View, a Non-Conforming Permit, and a Variance to construct in addition to the existing non-conforming guesthouse for a total of 248 square feet of new floor area. In addition, the project also seeks to legalize the existing deck, which encroaches into the rear yard setback and would expand it by 67 square feet to align with the addition. Avariance is required to legalize the existing deck within the rear yard setback. And on August 19, 2025, the ADR voted four to zero in support of the project as designed. The members agreed that the guesthouse addition is modest in scale and located outside the required setbacks. They also supported legalizing and expanding the non-conforming deck, noting that it would not negatively affect neighboring properties, given its distance from property lines and the screening on the lots. Staff request that the Town Council adopt Resolution 2537, approving the project for Designer View, Non-Conforming Permit, and a Variance. Thank you.
Questions, council members? Does the applicant wish to make a statement? They probably don't need to.
Yeah, we have the applicant. Lamb, can you hear us?
Yep. Hi, good evening, council members, Mayor. We don't get to have anything to add beside Alex's mention. We're just here for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any public comment on this item?
There are no raised hands online, Mayor.
Okay, let's bring it back for a motion or discussion.
I move we approve Resolution 2537.
A second.
Mayor McMillan?
Aye.
Councilmember Dowling?
Aye.
Councilmember Kircher?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Robbins?
Aye.
Councilmember Salter?
Aye.
With a vote of five, the motion passes.
Thank you. Administrative Agenda, item number 15, Ross Recreation Update. Maureen? Yes, thank you.
Hello. I am Maureen Borthwick, the Recreation Manager for the Town of Ross. Thank you, Mayor, and members of Town Council. Since we have a full agenda tonight, I will be presenting a brief update of the Recreation Department programs and initiatives, including a reminder of our mission statement, strategic plans for the fiscal year, and recent accomplishments and challenges. I'd like to, I'd like to start off with our mission statement, as this is the thread that ties everything together. Ross Recreation's mission is to provide a program of instruction to the public, to the public on subjects beneficial to the Ross community in which an individual may improve or develop him or herself physically, mentally, and/or socially. Ross Rec is strategically focused on mission-driven innovation, so we may continue to expand quality, inclusive programming for all ages. We are accomplishing this through a variety of ways. One is new communication tools. Staff has created and launched the Fall 2025 Program Guidebook, which is a full seasonal overview of programs and events. This was well-received by the community, and we will continue to do this for future seasons. Number two is strategic partnerships. For example, the staff is piloting a new collaboration that was just approved this evening, thank you, for a pilot program with Marin Art and Garden Center for shared program space. Number three is expanded program offerings in response to community feedback. This includes new programs such as Happy Hive After School, pre-K and Kinder Lacrosse, high-performance youth tennis classes, theater and biking classes, mahjong, senior trips, it goes on and on. Fourth is our community presence and events. We are trying to increase our community presence by our involvement with other organizations within Ross. This was our first time in known history that Ross Rec was invited to the Back to School Carnival on the Blacktop. It was a great event, and we, you know, fully supported the school of back to school and created balloon animals for all the kids. Also, Live on the Common, which is coming up on Friday, the 19th, staff will be organizing a three-on-three basketball tournament for ages eight through 13, and this is co-created with our POA to engage our middle schoolers. Speaking of innovation, here are the Fall 2025 Program Highlights for Youth and Adults. For youth, we have the new Happy Hive Preschool After School for ages three through five. We have strong early feedback for this program. Next, we have an Architexture Class with local architect Molly Gekki, a Wheel Kids After School Bike Club, pre-K ballet with Emma Norris of the Garden School, which is another example of our collaborations, theater and vocal classes with 23 Elephants Theater Company, and what staff is most excited for is our upcoming Ross Rec Haunted House. For adults and seniors, as you can see in the picture, we have begun our Beginner Mahjong Classes right here in our council chambers, as well as Tai Chi and Modern Bridge. We have free open games for seniors, such as dominoes, ping pong, et cetera, which will be launching soon and will be held on Wednesday afternoons. And we are coordinating senior trips to McAvoy Ranch in Petaluma, as well as a blind wine tasting with Cam X winemaker Katie Nydel, which I am most excited for. So, as success is celebrated, new challenges continue to arise for staff to problem solve. Staff is facing increased local competition, declining enrollment in recreation sports leagues, including Fall Soccer for K-2, and Flag Football, which is an NFL Flag partnership program. We are seeing competitors within three miles. We're seeing competitors such as Marin FC, Kenfield FC, Breakers FC, and a new program that we're seeing, we saw signs for it alongside Sir Francis Drake, an NFL Flag Football that will be held at Marin Catholic for the same ages. So, we are seeing direct competition, all, like I said, all within three miles of our town. So, how is Ross Rec dealing with this challenge? Through strategic positioning. So, Ross Rec is not only, we're not a league-only provider. We do not intend to directly compete with these specialty clubs. Post the Fall 2025 Fall Soccer Season, staff and parents will evaluate options. We're going to look to either maintain the current structure of our program, to revise league format, to transition to league field rentals to support local play and satisfy the community need here in Ross. So, that's, those are things that we will discuss directly with the community. Next, Ross Rec continues to face staffing challenges. The department operates primarily with two full-time staff supplemented by part-time and contract instructors. Part-time staffing retention is impacted by low or inconsistent hours available. Exploring partnerships with local departments, schools, and preschools is something that we're looking into to expand our staffing pool. Kids Club specifically. After a successful fiscal year ending '25, Kids Club After School was off to a strong start in fiscal year '26. To date, I am happy to report that Kids Club is paying for itself. Staff expect the program to continue to be fully sustainable throughout the end of this year fiscal year ending '26. Highlights of the fall program include modest upgrades to furniture, program supplies, meeting 14 new kindergarten families, and retaining majority of previous families, including eight Ross School District teaching staff families. For the '25-'26 academic school year, Ross School continues to help provide healthy snacks that are left over from Ross School Lunch Program. This helps us to reduce waste and department expenditures for snacks. The new Happy Hive After School Program officially launched on September 3, 2025. This operates Monday through Friday from 1 until 3:00 p.m. following the Garden School academic calendar. The program is housed in a newly renovated space adjacent to the Garden School at the Marin Art and Garden Center. This allows for close collaboration with both organizations and provides a convenient, enriching environment for participating families. In its inaugural session, Happy Hive is currently paying for itself and has 11 families enrolled. With no prior track record, this early interest demonstrates meaningful trust from the community and strong initial momentum. The renovated facility not only supports the current after-school program, but is also designed to host future toddler programming. Given the positive response and steady enrollment, staff anticipates similar or slightly increased participation in upcoming sessions and view this program as a promising addition to the Ross Rec portfolio. We've just had a few town events, as we've discussed. So, just a brief overview of our, two of our events that we've had this year. So, we've had the Fourth of July Parade and Celebration, which was a record-breaking year, 35 parade groups, you know, fun-for-all, including patriotic pooch. It was a wonderful event. This past Friday, we just had the Ross Town Dinner. It was a reimagined event with long community tables. And it was, you know, as our town manager has mentioned, we, the feedback was overwhelmingly positive from the community. So, I just want to thank you all, Town Council members, for your support in allowing us to reimagine the event, so thank you. We have upcoming Live on the Common event, which is a cosponsored event with our POA, as well as upcoming new events, such as the Ross Turkey Trot, which is scheduled for Saturday, November 15. This is in collaboration with our POA and Ross Auxiliary. We're also looking to, to set up and schedule a movie on the common very soon. Staff continue to promote programs and events through seasonal Ross Recreation Program Guidebooks, the Ross Rec Email Blast, Ross School District E-Pocket, Print Marketing, Postcards and Flyers, our POA Email Blast, Word of Mouth Through Parents and Other Participants, and Town of Ross Ross Review Newsletter. So, next steps for the, for the department include sending out the Winter 2025 Program Guidebook and opening up registration, which will happen next month. We will continue to offer non-schoolday camps for upcoming Yom Kippur and Veterans Day, continue to offer classes at dismissal time, and offer program-to-program escort, for example, Kids Club to Ross Rec enrichment programs, and continue to listen to the community and families regarding current programs and possible future programs, as well as continue our partnership with Ross School Superintendent's Office. Thank you, Mayor, and members of Town Council. This concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Maureen. You guys are doing so much work. Questions, council members?
A comment? Really, thank you for creative and really a full house of activities. And a special thank you for reaching out and coming up with some very creative adult and older adult activities. I think that's great. Look forward to seeing how well they do.
And I think it's wonderful that you were able to resurrect the after-school program because it was a big hole in what our town didn't offer, and, and to have it available for working parents is wonderful.
I have, yeah. Maureen, I just think you should take a bow. I think that the town dinner, especially reimagined, was just spectacular. The lighting, the churros, the paella. It was, I just saw so many kids and families, and I just thought it was a wonderful event, and I really appreciate the care and attention your team put into it. And we cannot thank you enough because I know it was taking a risk to change a sort of time-honored tradition. And I think you, you hit it out of the park. So, thank you. And then, as somebody who uses your department all the time, just thank you. And I also want to thank my colleagues on this council for, you know, the And I also want to thank my colleagues on this council for, you know, the stewardship of keeping that program after-school alive for working parents and funding it and see it thrive and pay for itself now. It was such a worthwhile endeavor, and it, it just, it helps those parents and especially the school teachers that use that after-school so that they can do their job. So thank you for just everything you're doing in this department and as a user and somebody who sees like a lot of the kids playing after-school and smiling. It, it really does warm my heart, and I just can't thank you and your department enough for the work you're doing for our community.
Yeah, I agree, Maureen. And I'm, I especially commend you for your creative partnership with Marin Art and Garden because that's a great resource that has been underutilized by the town, and so I'm looking forward to seeing how that evolves and develops. So thank you. Is there any public comment on this item?
No raised hands online, Mayor.
Great. Thank you, Maureen. Next, item number 16, Town Council to Receive a Presentation from Staff Regarding the Status of the Implementation of the Town of Ross Facilities Master Plan.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Just as David is getting set up here, he has a brief PowerPoint presentation. And the item tonight, this is not an action item for the council, this is a presentation from staff regarding the status of the implementation of the plan. If you recall, on June 15, 2023, the council adopted the Facilities Master Plan, and more specifically, the town council directed me to move forward with the phased development of Concept B described in the Facilities Master Plan. There are a couple of copies of the Facilities Master Plan, hard copies in the back of the council chambers here. It's also available online, and I did provide the link in the, to the webpage and put it in the staff report. As I introduced David earlier this evening, he began work here in mid-July, and he's made significant progress on, during his short tenure with, with the town. He did provide a memo to me. It is attached to my brief staff report, and he will be going through just a, a short recap of the Facilities Master Plan because we do have two council members that were not here when it was developed and adopted by the council, and talk a little bit about the things that he's been working on. Are you ready now, David? Great. Please, David Kelly.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, members of council, thank you again for this opportunity to present and provide an update on the Facilities Master Plan. Since I've started in late July, Krista has directed me to hit the, hit the ground running, and I think we've made significant progress thus far. So the presentation tonight is really to provide counsel with an update of the, on implementation progress that's made, but before that, really like to provide an overview of the Facilities Master Plan to give some context to the progress that we've made tonight. Some of the things that we're going to discuss include the roadmap included in your packet is a memo that kind of outlines some of the key progress that's made, been made to date, along with a Gantt timeline. We'll discuss the, the approach regarding environmental review under the California Environmental Quality Act, and in addition, highlight some of the progress we've made with respect to both affordable housing and discussions in collaboration with our external partners, which, you know, primarily focuses on the Ross Valley Paramedic Authority and the Fire Department. All right. So a little bit of background on the Facilities Master Plan. The Town of Ross engaged KPA architects in 2022 to do a fairly extensive analysis of the existing civic center. There were three key objectives of, of that work. One of the primary objectives was to assess the building and infrastructure conditions, and really part of that effort was to confirm the findings that were identified in the previous work. By way of background, there were totaling about five different assessments, starting in 2020, the year 2000 by Dan Winnie, following 2010 and 2010 by MAC5, and again in 2016 and 2020 by CDS, and then, last but not least, Dan Winnie again in 2025. So the culmination of their work was to really assess the work that was performed previously and determine if that was still, still valid. In addition to that assessment of building and infrastructure conditions, the KPA architects confirmed the program requirements for town departments. So it involved interviewing each of the town departments, assessing what their staffing needs were, both in terms of space and growth needs for their department, and, and preparing a program that identifies the, ultimately, the space needs by department. That includes the Police Department, Admin, and so forth. And then, last but not least, the report developed a conceptual design of four, or three conceptual designs, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. So in regards to the existing conditions, the KPA again did confirm that the, there's aging infrastructure across the Civic Center site. When we talk about infrastructure, what we're thinking about is kind of the hardscape, it's your, your pavement, your storm drains, your landscaping, and there's, there's a significant number of pictures that document the existing conditions within the study and show some of the deteriorating conditions of the Civic Center. In addition, they noted a number of operational inefficiencies, particularly with respect to separation of uses. We know that our Planning and Public Works Department are seated in a separate portable unit, and it's, it's noted that it's, it's not particularly conducive to collaboration amongst town staff and particularly interaction with, with your town manager. Last but not least, the report did identify a number of building and site deficiencies. Again, numerous pictures throughout the report identify, you know, what are, what are really considered some pretty significant deficiencies, particularly within your, your public safety buildings and your police department. Page six of the report just noted a quote here, "Significant deficiencies were visibly apparent throughout the Civic Center site and buildings and building infrastructure." So as I mentioned, the KPA prepared three conceptual design options for the council's consideration. Kind of the overarching perspective of those design options was really to retain Town Hall, retain this building that we're in, preserve the major trees that exist within the Civic Center. You have some really grand old redwood trees, and I can certainly understand why you'd want to preserve, preserve those. And there is also the theme of maintaining the Spanish Colonial Revival-style architecture that was established by John White, the original architect back in '27 and '28. In addition to the, you know, those, those major overarching direction, there were strategies to address the building deficiencies. That included removing the modular admin building, you know, adding that to, to Town Hall, removing the modular fire dormitory as well as public works building, and again, including that all in a new, a new Town Hall facility, constructing both a new police station as well as a paramedic station, and then doing some modernization and upgrades, some of which you've already taken here in Town Hall with the work that you've done recently. And then, last but not least, the plan identifies a number of improvements to site circulation and parking capacity. One of the key elements is to really to improve ingress and egress to the Civic Center. This is particularly important for public safety functions, both your police department as well as paramedics, and of course, improving, you know, visitor opportunities for, for making, you know, coming in visits, City Hall or Town Hall, and providing secure parking for police. And we'll, we'll look at this with, in, in just a moment. One additional action, which is fairly unique, and I applaud the council for doing this, was dedicating a portion of the Civic Center site. You have a very small piece of property here in 2.33 acres, but you want to dedicate a portion of that property for nine regional housing units. And when we look at the site plan, you'll, you'll, you'll see clearly where that's identified. So this is the, the option that council chose, it was Option B. Kind of, I'll point out some elements here, see if the, see if this pointer works, I'm not sure. If I turn it on. Oh, that's the flashlight. There we go. Oh, this one. There we go. Here we go. All right. So just for, for orientation, here's Sir Francis Drake, Lagunitas, and then Laurel Grove Intersection. So the key elements include access point, a one-way-only entry via Lagunitas here, also alignment of the main entrance to Civic Hall along Laurel Grove, so really tying that in. You will see that currently it's located here. This is your new proposed admin facility. Here's your, your new police station. And again, that was one of the elements of the master plan was to really move those, those uses up front to the sidewalk with key frontage along Sir Francis Drake. Located, kind of going north is your, your paramedic facility and associated apparatus bay, and then again, on the north are the proposed nine units to meet your, your arena numbers. Surrounding the site and along Quarter Madera Creek is where primarily the parking is located and situated, so to kind of give you a perspective with an aerial. This, this, this highlights those, the, the new admin building, the new police station. What we do want to reflect here is the location of some of the existing buildings. So this right now is your existing fire station. This is your, the modular facility that's planned for removal, just to give you kind of a perspective of where those sit relative to the adopted master plan. Again, here's your, your paramedics facility and apparatus bay, and again, to the north is the nine units of affordable housing. You can also see by this little shaded area here, that's the location of the existing driveway entrance and how it relates to the, the proposed new facilities, and why it would be necessary to, to eliminate that and, and provide new access via Laurel Grove. There's some real benefits to tying in egress and ingress here. This is a signalized intersection. That's particularly important for public safety functions to, to have, have ingress and egress tied to the intersection, and there's, there's a number of controls that can be implemented, and, and this can also, in essence, be a controlled stop both in and out from, from the site. Along with the, the design options, KPA did develop cost estimates for the three, the three concepts that were presented to council, and this is the, the cost estimate for Option B, which is just short of 20, 21 million. You know, for, for reference, Option A, which was similar, it maintained the, the three arches that represent the Colonial Revival architecture style, and it was about $3 million in addition to that cost to, to retain those as part of the project. All right. So with that, that kind of covers the, the background of the adopted Facilities Master Plan, and we're going to, just going to proceed post haste here on an update on our implementation and progress. So one of the initial efforts for discussions with the town manager was really to develop a, a roadmap and Gantt timeline. I think some of the key benefits is that, you know, roadmap is really intended to provide both clarity and vision relative to the deliverables for the project and tie those to both a timeline and schedule for meeting and addressing key, key milestones. Ultimately, it also helps with prioritizing phases based on urgency and funding, and we'll talk a little bit more, more about that. So I wanted to emphasize that the approach that the town manager and I, along with your staff, have been working on is, is a phased approach. And again, the, the, the challenge in delivering a project like this, especially with affordable housing, is, it's very difficult to do it all at once, and affordable housing in particular is going to rely on, on partners, and, you know, to tie that into project funding is kind of an unknown. So when we, when we, while we, we're going to continue to work on affordable housing element, that's one of the reasons why a phased approach is important. One of the things we certainly understand, and I know that the town manager has conveyed, is how important public safety is in this community, and, you know, one of our directions is to evaluate phasing of both, you know, of the public safety elements of the master plan with a focus on delivery of the paramedic facility as well as the police station. And it's, it's important to note that the paramedic facility is tied to a lease agreement that the town manager is working on, and included within that lease agreement are timelines for delivery. So it kind of instructs to a certain extent the delivery of the project by looking at the timelines within that lease agreement. It's also important to note that, you know, there's a prioritization of improvements, and that's where council direction comes in, and, you know, it's ultimately based on urgency. We know the Ross Valley Paramedic Authority license, lease agreement helps drive that, but it's also about availability of resources and looking at your, your funding that's included in your budget and your capital budgets to carry out the project. I want to note that Public Works Director is present, and he's provided an update that they're actively working on the undergrounding of utilities on, on Sir Francis Drake. Surveys were completed in July. They're currently completing the base mapping. Ultimately, the goal is to complete design in October and move forward with construction in the fall of 2026. So that's, that's again, a priority, prioritization of elements of this project is to underground those, those utilities, the goal of which is to, to smooth execution. There's, there's a lot of moving parts with this, and again, tying back to that Gantt chart, trying to keep those in, in, in a timely basis. So again, staff with, with Krista's input, developed a, you know, a Gantt chart that you see here that provides a, a timeline for, for implementation of the key elements of the master plan, which, you know, again, focuses on delivery of the paramedic facility and the, and the police building. I can say I went on a tour with Chief Pata, and I can underscore the need to replace the police station as, as soon as possible. Ultimately, it's, again, as I mentioned, important to align those improvements with, with your funding available, and when, and Krista and I have been working closely on understanding the budget, but also recognizing the need to do environmental clearance by way of compliance with CEQA, and we've, we've started that process by meeting with, with staff, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. So I just wanted to kind of make this a little bigger, to show the, the Gantt chart, and this is, what's, the beauty of Gantt charts is they can be kind of updated as, you know, over time to see how everything is connected and flows together. The, kind of the ending timeline for inspections and occupancy is April of 2029, and that, that all ties back to the, the, the lease agreement with the Ross Valley Paramedic Authority and, and meeting the timelines for delivery of a new, a new facility that would house your, your paramedics. All right. So talk a little bit about the CEQA process. Staff, including your Planning Director, Public Works Director, and myself, had an internal scoping meeting. We utilized what's referred to as Appendix G of the CEQA guidelines, is your initial study checklist. of the SEQA guidelines, is your initial study checklist, to really go through all of the environmental issues with respect to implementation of the master plan. And that's kind of what you see at the table here. I apologize for the small text. But we kind of went through all of those issues to identify what are the key environmental issues that need to be addressed. Of course, you know, with the proximity to Quarter Madera Creek, you know, understanding the project's impact on the creek is important. Understanding the cultural resources and historic buildings that exist here are all things that will need to be closely addressed as part of the environmental review process. Our goal is to use that internal scoping to hire a environmental consultant to prepare the environmental documentation for this project. Next steps, including meeting with the town attorney to discuss in more detail, to make sure we have a defensible process going forward. With respect to affordable housing, again, the northern portion of the parcel that we sit on, the 2.33 acres, is planned and proposed for nine affordable units. I prepared a draft RFQ to seek development partners. So that's about ready to go. There's a little bit more work I want to do in identifying what other resources might be available through the county. And of course, look at opportunities to partner for this project. Both town manager, planning director, and I met with David Hanson, the CEO of the Branson School, and discussed the opportunity for a public-private partnership. And I think it could be a very healthy partnership to look into a ground lease for workforce housing, particularly tied to, and related to, the staff at the Branson School. They also have housing needs and are developing housing plans. So there's going to be some more coordination with Mr. Hanson. I think he was very supportive of a potential collaboration there. But we'll be looking at that and whether we can do maybe a joint RFQ or partner further with Hanson School. I think all of you know that the town manager has been in lease negotiations with the Ross Valley Paramedic Authority. One of my roles in helping that endeavor, and I know Krista's really taken the bulk of the lead on that, was just to help prepare a site description based on the facility master plan, you know, to kind of reference the area so that you have a legally defensible site area that you ultimately plan to lease to the paramedics. We, in addition, we did meet with Chief Weber at the Marin County Fire regarding both layout and access to the proposed paramedic facility. In addition, the county Board of Supervisors is in the process of updating their their delivery model for construction projects. And they're looking at this process called progressive design build. And we're doing an evaluation. I've, you know, shared with Krista. That's something early on that we want to look at and bring back to council so that council can weigh in. There are different delivery models for the project. You can do traditional design bid build. But really, progressive design build is kind of a way of delivering a project to ensure you ultimately get what you're seeking at the most feasible cost. Last but not least, staff has been working on a lease, an updated lease agreement for the existing cell tower. It's shown on the PowerPoint here as a picture of the existing tower. Included in that lease agreement, of course, would be updated lease terms, identify options for co-location by multiple carriers. And we, you know, first and foremost, want it to be compatible with the new civic site layout. We know that there's some constraints where it is now, adjacent to the building, which requires some coordination with staff. And the goal would be to generate additional revenue for the town and/or reduce maintenance requirements. So in conclusion, the ultimate goal here is to, you know, advance and improve town facilities for a stronger community, have a current, modern civic center and town hall, to align those with the community values and ultimately support public safety and service. So with that, that concludes my presentation. Sorry if I went a little too fast. I just want, there's a lot to cover. And I'm here to answer along with the town manager. Any questions you may have?
Thank you, David. That was excellent. Questions from council members? Bill?
It's a question comment. With respect to the housing, the nine units of housing, I attended the last Association of Bay Area Governments General Assembly meeting, and it was mentioned there that ABAG does have resources available to help with fulfilling our housing mandates where we're looking for partners or people who can come in and develop the property. Has that, has anyone looked into that? If not, I recommend that you give it a, you know, give it a try.
Thank you, Councilmember Kircher. That's a great idea to look at ABAG and look at what resources they have. We'll certainly do that.
Great.
Thank you.
Other questions? I have a question. What kind of magnitude on the telecommunications, the cell tower lease? What kind of revenue would that generate?
Well, that's subject to additional negotiations with the provider or the developer of the cell tower. We have the data on the existing lease agreement, but it's an opportunity to relook at that, especially with three carriers. The other element to that is what costs we might ask them to incur as part of making improvements that are consistent with the facility master plan and how that might factor into the lease payments that they make to the town. So we don't have, I don't have a set number. But Krista may want to offer more on that.
Thank you, David. We have, right now, in the adopted budget, we estimate receiving $78,000 in cellular lease payments this year. We did have one provider that pulled out a couple of years ago. So as David says, it's really all about the deal, you know. So we've had a lot of, we've had meetings. We've had interest in what they want. But a big part of the deal is what are we going to get in revenue? Or like David said, what they also could build, potentially build part of our facility or elements of our facility. So it's all to be negotiated. And of course, everything would come to the council.
Thank you. Elizabeth?
I have a question. There's some residents who have been wondering, you know, is there room for a fire station or fire bay? If that should come to pass? And so my question is, where you're showing the paramedic quarters, is there, is there room at some point in the future, if desired, to add another bay for a fire engine?
May I? You know, we, that would require, we would have to amend the facility's master plan. So we would have to have an architect look at it. I know that when we were partway through the process of developing the master plan back in the spring of 2023, when we decided, I think through feedback from council members, I recall, we originally had kind of looked at having the paramedic facility in the same, kind of connected to the police department. And we decided it was better for access, for emergency access, for them to be closer to Sir Francis Drake. And so they're kind of tucked, they're tucked in there. Then we've got the police secure parking for the police department right behind it. So if we were to expand the apparatus bay for the paramedic facility into the, where the police secured parking is, we'd have to find a place to put the police secured parking in something that's also accessible for the police department because they also have to get out, in and out quickly. So there's not a lot of room. But of course, you know, we would need the expert input from architects. Did you have anything to add, David?
No, I think you said it well, Krista. I was just going to just show, here again, is the planned paramedic facility. And right behind it, and it's a little tough to see, is the secure parking for our police department. So I think when Krista referred to the secure parking, that's what she's referring to there. And we did have discussions with Fire Chief Weber about the apparatus bay and how many vehicles it could support. And that's something that we need to look at more closely.
How many vehicles does it support right now? The planned apparatus bay?
The planned, it supports one ambulance.
Okay. Thank you.
Matt, do you have questions?
Yeah. So the first thing is, I definitely think, given the ballot initiative that we're facing, that we should plan for an alternative that shows, you know, three bays and sleeping quarters for five people or something, that we just need to at least have that on as an option that may occur. If the ballot is successful and voted on, then we'll have to have some option available. So that's just, to just as a statement. But my question for you is, you know, this is requiring financing, and we will need two-thirds of a vote to support it. And given the opposition that exists already today, I think that we should, you know, in your Gantt chart, you have the financing, you know, at the back end. And I think we need to do some sort of feasibility study or have like a poll done with a professional group to see if there's support for, of two-thirds to vote for a bond measure. Because if we don't have the money, I don't know how we move forward with the project.
Mayor, if I can, that's okay. I think Councilmember Salter makes a good point relative to the SEQA description. And I think that's something that we want to coordinate closely with town attorney on, on how to address that as part of the SEQA process, so that it's reviewed from an environmental perspective. So that's something that I think we'll have to just coordinate closely and how it relates to the ballot measure. You know, getting back to the discussion around a phasing is, you know, under the town manager's direction, is really look at how the project can be delivered within the existing budget. And that's kind of bringing forward the paramedic and police facility first. I think the, I think the idea and the goal is to try to see if you can deliver that with existing resources. But that's part of the validation process that we want to do with bringing back the architects to reaffirm the cost estimates, to update those. We know there's been significant inflationary pressures and not sure how that exactly impacts those cost estimates that were prepared by KPA. So we need to do that. So that'll all be part of the strategy going forward once we get those numbers updated, is to look at, you know, is it going to be, is it necessary to do a bond measure? And if so, you know, how do we, how do you proceed? Including, you know, what kind of polling do you want to do? And that's certainly, having done that, I know polling is critically important to get that community feedback on what their level of support for a potential measure would be.
Yeah. So just to be clear, we know we need it. We don't have enough money to do this project. So I'm just, it's like, almost like the cart before the horse. Like, we have to figure out what support is out there so that we know before we start. You know, a SEQA study, I was told, could be over $1 million and take a year. So it's like, how much are we spending upfront before we even understand if there's support for this whole master plan? And I'm reticent to spend a lot of money until we know that the community, we have support for this proposal. If we don't have it, how are we spending all the town's money? And then we're, and then the bond measure fails. So I don't know if you can add that to your Gantt chart, but there needs to be some research done on the feasibility of doing this.
Thank you, Councilmember Salter. You know, it isn't in the Gantt chart, but absolutely. I mean, there's many steps to this process. And we will be coming back to the council frequently. And a big element, big part of it is, is what options does the council have to fund this project? And weaving in what happens with a ballot measure, which is not a ballot measure yet because we haven't received a signature or gone down that path. So, you know, there's really a lot to consider. And, you know, the council is, and staff, the council too, is going to be spending a lot of time on all elements of this project, including financing. So we'll flesh that out. This is our first update to the council, and you will be receiving many more.
So in terms of safety, safety, excuse me, phasing, it does appear there's a particular concern with prioritizing public safety, police, paramedics, et cetera, which would all be towards the north. If I'm reading that diagram correctly, the blue would be police and associated support. And then the paramedics to the north of that, the red building, red and orange building. So it does, it does appear that that part could be prioritized just in terms of the space. Now, if the fire station comes into it, well, that makes it a little more complicated. But so then in phasing, so the idea is that the administrative buildings would be in a later phase. Is that, I mean, I know this is very conceptual at this point, but is that what we're, basically what we're talking about when we discuss phasing?
Yes, but we, with the caveat that we still have to be working with the architects on the feasibility, how does that work with phasing? You know, ideally, we would do this all at the same time. But if we don't have the funding or the, I'm very concerned about the police station. We need a new police station. And so, you know, there's just a, there's a lot of different moving parts. There could be, after we hear back from the architects about the feasibility or the, of phasing the project, or anything's probably, most things are probably feasible, but there's going to be a cost attached to it. And it could be that the architect comes back and says, well, if you want to fade, if you want to prioritize the police and the paramedics, maybe the police station needs to be a little bit separate from the other buildings. I don't know. We have to get the architects to provide us with that information. And so we will do that.
Yeah. I mean, it just, it just seems that the main uncertainty here, in addition to uncertainty about the firehouse, would be funding. Are we going to have the funding or not? And I don't think we want to wait a long time before we start, particularly the police. But we're also under some time pressure on the paramedics, which we've been discussing for a long time. So I don't mean to slight the administrative staff, but I think everybody agrees, we've just got to get going on that.
So we do have money now?
Yes.
About 12 million.
By the end of the current fiscal year, we estimate we will have just a little bit less than 12 million in the capital projects fund for this purpose.
So we might have enough money to do the police and the paramedics and start with that and not delay. We've got the money for that now.
I think it's, I think it's a really good possibility. But again, it's the engineering and the site work and all that. I don't, I can't tell you right now if it's feasible or how expensive it will be to do it that way. So but the good news is that this council has been very frugal and has been steadily setting aside. This amount of funding is really impressive. And it's giving the council some options as all these moving parts keep moving.
I just want to say that I'm thrilled that we're starting. Thank you.
Public comment on this item?
No raised hands on line, Mayor.
Any further discussion, council? Thank you very much for a great presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of council.
Next is item 17, Town Council consideration to approve Resolution Number 2513, adopting the final initial study, mitigated negative deck and mitigation monitoring and reporting program, approving the Balinas storm drain improvements, Phase Two project as described in the final, the final IS slash mitigated negative deck and authorizing the Public Works Director to advertise the project for public Director to advertise the project for public bid. Rich.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the Town Council. Rich Semenich, Public Works Director, just give me a minute here. I've got a fairly brief presentation on this project.
I know, it's freezing. Do I push, I hope push a whole button?
I'm not sure. She's going to try. Okay. Tonight, we are going to review the initial study and mitigating negative declaration for the Bollinas Storm Drain Improvements Phase Two project. You may recall, back in April, we did present, or we did have this item on consent. The initial study mitigating negative deck was submitted to the State Clearing House in February. We did meet the SEQA statutes for notifications on that. Then we brought it to council on April 3. Some residents were concerned that they did not have enough time to review the document, and they had other additional concerns about the construction procedure. So we added another 30 days of review time for the residents and the public to review the document. That second comment period ended on May 8, 2025, and we did receive comment letters that we have addressed. And with those, with the addressing of those comment letters, we are presenting the final initial study and mitigated negative deck for this project. So this is kind of an interesting picture. This was Bollinas Avenue during the December 2016 storm. It was like two weeks after I started work here. It was less than a five or six-year storm, but the roadway was entirely inundated by flooding. The Phase One program project took care of most of the issues with the undersized storm drain. We've had some good reports from the residents in that area that we had similar storms in the past few years, and they didn't see any water come up out of the, out of the storm drains for any localized flooding. So that's a big success. So the second phase of the Bollinas Avenue Storm Drain Improvements will add even further flood protection to this area. I think the Phase One currently had a six-year level of flood protection. We're going to bring that to a 10-year storm level of protection. So the SEQA process for an initial study mitigating negative deck, why did we go this route? Well, in face with a discretionary project, which is not exempt from SEQA, a lead agency must prepare an initial study to determine whether the project may have a significant adverse effect on the environment. If there are no adverse effects, or if the potential effect can be reduced to a level that is less than significant through project revisions, a negative declaration in MND can be adopted by the governing board. Following the comment period, the Town of Ross must adopt the IS MND and approve the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, which was Appendix A of the document, before it can approve the proposed project for public bidding construction. So that's why we are here tonight. SEQA process for this project, the impacts, the environmental factors below, we evaluated that in the checklist included in Chapter Three. We determined that the environmental factors that are checked below, the ones highlighted in yellow up on your screen, would be less than significant with the implementation of mitigation measures. The unchecked factors would have a less than significant or no impact. So the nuts and bolts of the mitigated negative deck is the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. This is, this is the implementation schedule for all the identified mitigation measures and the responsible entities for mitigating impacts identified in the initial study. We will use this mitigation monitoring and reporting program to ensure that identified mitigation measures adopted as conditions of project approval are implemented appropriately. The mitigation monitoring and reporting program provides mitigation measures for all activities that are identified as having some type of impact, including those that are identified as requiring mitigation to be considered less than significant. And I do have our SEQA consultants available for questions at the end of the presentation. So more on the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. With respect to this, the IS MND for the Bollinas Storm Brain Project Phase Two, we have the environmental factors that require mitigation to be considered less than significant. So we identified four items from that list that are going to require mitigation to reduce these from significant to below significant levels, allowing us to proceed with the mitigated negative deck. So the first one was biological resources were identified. The mitigation procedures that we are going to be implementing include coordination with National Marine Fisheries' Regional Water Quality Control Board and the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, the permit conditions that'll come from them. We have dewatering activities, species surveys, construction, education prior to construction, and some, some training before construction starts in order, so that the folks working out there will be able to identify and handle those items that are identified and the other regulatory permitting. We have cultural and tribal resources. We did have a consultation with Federated Tribes of Great and Rancheria initially, and they did say that they would like to be on-site during construction. There will be tribal monitoring. There'll be, again, training and education for the contractor to be able to identify any significant cultural and tribal resources during construction. The transportation and traffic impacts, and that's mainly during construction. We do have a Marin Transit bus stop there that'll need to be removed. We're coordinating with Marin Transit so that their schedules can accommodate the construction. And then a traffic control plan for Sir Francis Drake Boulevard because there will be a lane closure during construction. So all of these things, we have a mitigation plan, traffic control plan, to handle the impacts to transportation and traffic. And then hazardous and hazardous materials. We did identify some soil contaminants when we did a soil survey that was at the request of the residents that live nearby. It was a very, very prudent idea and a decision that we followed through on. So we did some soil testing. That's been completed. The contractor will be required to prepare a project compliance plan to handle the contaminated soils. This, there's nothing out of the ordinary here. This happens all the time. They will have to export these materials to certain locations that are licensed to receive them at a little bit of additional cost. A lot of these locations are in the East Bay and even the Central Valley. We're going to have to truck that material out to those locations. And then we'll be replacing it with clean fill. So we are, it'll be a nice cleanup of that area. And there'll be a lot of dewatering. We need to keep the dust down and as they excavate. So again, it's not a, it's nothing that's irregular. It's just a little bit more expensive to have to handle this property under regulatory handling and disposal. So a little bit on the project itself. Got my pointer here. So Phase One project came, this is Bollinas Avenue, and this is Sir Francis Drake, and you're coming in from San Onselmo. San Onselmo Avenue is down here. Here's the little Bollinas Market. So Phase One, we built the storm drain up to here, and it currently outfalls at the Windship Bridge right here. We're going to leave that outfall in place. It has a flooding, a flap gate, a flood control device on that outlet to keep the backwater from backing up into Bollinas. And then we're going to construct the second leg from that manhole down to Sir Francis Drake Boulevard, and it's going to outfall just downstream of the Sir Francis Drake Bridge. Here's the, here's the San Onselmo Creek up here. It was under the Windship Bridge here and continues on to San Onselmo. So that's the extent of the project, right along Sir Francis Drake, and it's going to end right at the, at the Sir Francis Drake Bridge. This is kind of a view of the main construction area right here. Face, you're just coming into Ross from San Onselmo, and you're just past the bus stop, and the, Sir Francis Drake Bridge is up here. This is the private driveway for these, for the three property owners that are, that will be primarily impacted by construction. And then to get an idea of what we, what was before, proposed before, and what is now proposed. So we initially had the alignment when we brought the project to council on, in April. We had the alignment coming through here and then tying in back here, and then it heads off and drains at the, in the creek there at the downstream side of the Sir Francis Drake Bridge. We've relocated the project to the curb line of Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. Now, we pulled it out of this area. This was actually, it turns out that this was the old alignment of the railroad. So we are, we're minimizing any disturbance on that railroad in this area. There'll be a little bit of disturbance area up by the bus stop, but that, there's no residences nearby that area. But be that as it may, we're still going to be exporting a lot of the material, whether it's contaminated or not, just as a safety measure. And this is just a plan of the outfall at the Sir Francis Drake Bridge. The bridge is over here, and then just off the bridge, if you look down, it's pretty hard to see, but if you know where to look, the existing outfall is here. We're going to be replacing that with a larger outfall here with riprap, and it's going to require some dewatering. And it's, this is the nuts and bolts of all the regulatory permitting is this work right here on the creek bank on, just between the Sir Francis Drake Bridge and these private properties. So, but it's my understanding that the regulatory agencies are happy with our mitigation measures, and we'll be submitting for those permits as soon as we have project approval. And we should be getting those permits in line for the beginning of construction. So, staff recommends that Town Council approve Resolution Number 2513, adopting the final initial study and mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program, approving the Bollinas Storm Drain Improvements Phase Two project as described in the final IS MND, and authorize Public Works Director to advertise the project for public bid. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Rich. Questions, council? Elizabeth?
Just a quick one. What are the contaminants or toxins that you expect to find when you do the work by the railroad tracks?
There was a, it's a pretty long list of elements, the ones that were actually, I think, determined, we don't use the term toxic, but contaminated soils. They did find trace elements of DDT, and they found some lead and some arsenic and things like that, very trace elements of it, but still enough to qualify it, qualify it as contaminated under the state regulatory requirements.
Thank you.
Jerry?
Rich, when do you plan to start? And how long will it take? When will you be finished?
Good question. We plan to start, we plan to go out to bid, we're going to advertise tomorrow. Bid opening will be in early October, so the October council meeting will be recommending an award for the contract. We'd like to get started, at least all of the work that's not down in the creek. We want to get that started and completed before the rainy season starts. And then we want to complete the work in the creek with the, with the dewatering sometime in the winter before the rains get too hard and the creek flows get too high. So it's kind of a, it's a timing issue. We'd like to be finished by June of 2026, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. The contractor understands that there will probably be a break in construction between the above-ground stuff and the work down in the creek. So that's all in the contract documents.
Anybody else? Matt, are you okay?
No, I actually have a question.
Wait.
The cost of this project is like tripled. So if I'm reading your staff report right, is that correct?
I don't think it's tripled, but it's, it's almost, almost doubled.
I see 900,000, and it was supposed to be 300, unless I'm, I mean, is, do you have the, it says the engineer's estimate is 936, 936,000. The estimated cost exceed the fiscal budget by, oh, sorry, 336,000.
The updated estimate I got yesterday brought the cost down to 800,000. But yeah, there has been some cost escalations, and that's primarily related to two items. That's, that we've moved the alignment out of the dirt driveway and right into the curb line of Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. So all of those improvements need to be demolished, and then the storm drain goes in, and then we need to reconstruct that, reconstruct the sidewalk. And, you know, demolition, it usually pencils out to be at least as expensive as reconstruction. So you've, you've basically doubled the costs there. And then another cost item, significant cost item, is trucking out the contaminated soils to these receiving points in the East Bay and the Central Valley. That, that's going to get fairly expensive. So we're being conservative in our estimates. Happily, the construction environment out there has become very competitive. We're, I'm seeing more bids than I've ever seen working here. Like, we got seven bids on the Morrison Road project. That was pretty unprecedented. So, you know, I'm hoping in the competitive bid price, bid environment, we'll see some low bids come in. But yeah, that explains it. The project did get a little bit more expensive, and it was because we've relocated the project into the, into the roadway to lessen the impacts on the residents, really.
And, and sorry, and thank you. And I know we wanted to take their concerns into consideration, so I appreciate that the new plans do that. I'm just wondering, from your perspective, like, the cost benefit analysis. Like, I know Phase One was extremely important. Are we getting, do you think, enough benefit for the cost of this project?
I think so. So there's, there's a couple. So there's a couple things about this project that are worth noting. So we are taking a fairly good-sized watershed that drains into Bolinas, and where it used to empty out at the Windship Bridge, just upstream of the five or six properties between the Windship Bridge and Sir Francis Drake Bridge. Well, we're going to be rerouting that to downstream of the Sir Francis Drake Bridge, which is like, it's going to be a lower water surface elevation. It improves the hydraulic characteristics significantly. So the bottom line is alleviates some of the flow that's entering the Windship Bridge and impacting those properties between the Windship Bridge and Sir Francis Drake and dumping it out at a lower, more hydraulically efficient area. Improving the flood protection from a five- or six-year level of flood protection to a 10-year is actually very significant. We see a lot of five- or six-year, seven-year storms around here, and that's enough to cause overbank flooding on the San Anselmo Creek and the Corder Madera Creek. When you get up to even just a 10-year storm, that's a pretty significant storm. And currently, the Phase One improvements could not handle it. You'll start seeing localized flooding on Bolinas Avenue, just, you know, on the six- or seven-year storm. So this is providing an additional level of flood protection. I think it's a great project. We have plenty of money in the drainage fund to handle this project and to continue on with our maintenance program that are identified in the Stormwater Master Plan. So fiscally, we're being still responsible with completing this project. I think it's got a great benefit. The other important thing that we're doing is we have a public storm drain that runs through the backyard of a private property that has no maintenance easement at all. It's problematic to be able to access that to clean it out. This will bring the storm drain out into the public right-of-way, so it's going to be a lot less problems to maintain the storm drain. That's another benefit. So I think, you know, without having an analytical analysis of a cost-benefit, I think this is a project which was identified in 2012 by the Town Councils of Ross and San Anselmo as an important project, and was vetted through that process. I think the cost-benefit is justified in my mind, if you're asking my opinion.
Okay, I know I am. Thank you. That was very helpful. Just a last question. I thought San Anselmo helped pay for Phase One. Has there any indication that they might be interested in helping to pay for Phase Two?
When I brought that up during the, while we were wrapping up Phase One, we kind of, they kind of said, no, that, you know, you moving it down into Ross is more of your, it's more of a Ross issue. So they kind of declined to help out on this phase. You know, we share the right-of-way of Bolinas Avenue, right down the center with San Anselmo and Ross, but we're pulling the project into the town of Ross, so they felt that they didn't, they weren't interested in contributing to this phase.
Even though it does benefit their homes there that won't, you know, flood as it's moving to a 10-year level, right? I mean, they're going to benefit even, I'm sort of surprised that they weren't interested to at least throw in some money.
Yes, there is an argument there that our project will benefit some homes in San Anselmo.
Okay, thank you.
Any public comment on this item? No raised hands online. Thank you. We'll bring it back for less discussion or emotion.
I would move that we approve Resolution Number 2513.
Second.
Mayor McMillan?
Aye.
Councilmember Darling?
Aye.
Councilmember Kircher?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Robbins?
Aye.
Councilmember Salter?
Aye.
With a vote of five, the motion passes. Thank you, Rich. Item number 1836 Allen Avenue Design Review Accessory Dwelling Unit Exception Permit of Variance and Town Council Adoption of Resolution Number 2538 Approving the Project Subject to Conditions or Resolution Number 2540 Denying the Project. Alex. Alex and Roberta.
Yeah, give me one second. I know, but... It is? It's not this one? Yeah, that's why I was like looking for it. Okay. I got it.
Mayor, does anybody need a real short break? We're almost done, right? Hopefully?
Yes.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Tonight, the homeowner at 36 Allen Avenue is seeking Town Council on consideration for designer review and ADU exception permit and a variance to construct a new 460-square-foot detached garage. The new detached garage is designed to match the existing house, as you can see here. It would also be located within the front and side yard setback. Here you can see the existing garage on the north side of the lot, and that's where they're proposing an ADU as well, and the new proposed garage in the front in red right there. An ADU exception permit is required to convert the existing 460-square-foot detached garage into an ADU and transferring the floor area allowance to construct a new detached 460-square-foot garage. A variance is required because the new garage is proposed within the front and side yard setback. In March 2025, the applicant received approval to convert the existing detached garage into an ADU. Later, they applied for an ADU exception permit to transfer that same square footage and more and build a new garage in the front yard, in the front and side yard setbacks. This is a street view of where they want to propose the detached garage. In June, the project went to the ADR group. Most members did not support the variance for extra floor area and also an attached garage in the front and side yard setback. The applicant then revised the design. They reduced the garage from 624 square feet down to 460 square feet, so it stayed within the existing non-conforming floor area, as well as new setbacks, 19 feet from the front property line, also just around five feet from the side property line. And in August, the ADR reviewed the revised plans, and the decision was split, a two-in-two vote with one of the members absent. Two members supported the project, noting that the square footage was being shifted from one, excuse me, one non-conformity setback to another, but the other two opposed their raising concerns about more hardscape, cars in the front yard, and the precedent it could set. But all the ADR members did not see any hardship for the variance. Staff received three public comments from neighbors, one in support of the project and two in opposition with concerns regarding setbacks and the potential precedent it could set. The recommendation tonight is for the Town Council's consideration for designer review and ADU exception permit and a variance. And staff has prepared two resolutions, Resolution 2538 to approve the project and Resolution 2540 to deny the project. Thank you.
Questions of staff? Elizabeth?
So, many years ago, there was a project on Ames where there was a garage that was living space, and the family wanted to build a new garage in the front. And that wasn't approved. Does the town discourage garages in the front of the property, or is it part of our code?
Yes. So if you look at the denial resolution, there are part of the design guidelines, which is a guideline, that it's discouraged to have any structures or garages in the front setback. So that's, if the council were to deny it, that is one of the findings that could not be made for the design review.
Thank you.
Bill?
My understanding is that for a variance to be granted, there typically has to be some sort of a hardship, which, when these matters normally come before us, the hardship is that the resident can't have some amenity or feature or development on their property that's typical of other properties in that neighborhood because of the configuration of their lot. So am I correct that that issue isn't really present here? I mean, other people have garages, including garages that are in the back on that street. I mean, is there some other basis here for the finding of a hardship? It seems to me it's more a question of an inconvenience.
Yes, that's correct. Okay, so there you could find, if you wanted to approve it, special circumstances that are hardships, that are physical to the lot. For instance, you can see, you can go to the setbacks, Alex. The front yard is really just that curve. It's almost a corner lot, right? It's not your standard front, fronting the street. So I suppose you could find that the, this lot is an odd shape, and therefore, if you look at the front setback with that curve, you know, it'd be impossible to meet that 25-foot setback, and maybe that's imposing a hardship to meet that.
All right. Well, this is a time for questions, so maybe you have something else to say when we get to the discussion. Go ahead.
Was there a consideration of the new proposed garage actually being the ADU? So having the ADU in the front and keeping the garage where it is, had that been considered? It might be more attractive going into that area?
Yes. During the ADR meeting, the applicant did show a sketch, and two of the members did prefer that. They'd rather see a charming sort of ADU in the front than a garage with cars.
Matt, do you have any questions? Okay, we can hear from the applicant now. You have 15 minutes. You don't have to use all the time. You can reserve time if you want, based on public comment.
Madam Mayor, Council, thanks for your time. You hear me? Okay. My name's John Mo. My wife and I own 36 Allen. We're very fortunate to have the opportunity to buy that property. We've lived in Ross for 37 years. We know the community, love the community. We want to stay here. So we've taken a big commitment to redo a house that was built in 1949. It'll be a lovely home. I'm not trying to make a thing out of it, a big fancy home. It's a little shingle cottage home, which we love. So about the garage, I think it's pretty straightforward. We have an opportunity, and I'm looking for direction tonight from the council. We have an opportunity to put the ADU in the front and then leave the garage in the back. From a land use standpoint, that doesn't make any sense. Garages need to be close to the street. That said, you know, we are open to anything that council decides tonight. I've had long conversations with my neighbors. They're very concerned about their privacy and looking down on my property. Well, privacy for me is also important. We've talked at length about, you know, trying to keep both of our properties enjoyable within what we're trying to accomplish. I think staff did a good job in trying to understand what we're trying to accomplish in just taking an existing square footage, not increasing FAR, and figuratively, not literally, moving that to the front of the building and allowing the ADU to live in the back. So all I'm really looking for tonight is direction from the council. That'll allow me to decide what I'm going to do with the property, how I'm going to design it, what the impact on the neighborhood's going to be. If I'm doing an ADU in front, rest assured, the impact on the neighborhood will be larger than the little garage I'm currently proposing. It doesn't sound like council hear that design. I don't think it'll come in front of them. That's the dilemma you're faced with tonight, is when projects like this come before you, what are you going to do? I understand setbacks. I've been an architect for 47 years. I understand setbacks. But we also have a commitment to the state and the housing to allow ADUs to occur. So we want an ADU, but we don't want to give up a garage to accomplish it. So I need direction. I'll design whatever council comes up with in terms of what you want me to do. I can do that. So thank you for your time.
Is there any public comment online? No raised hands, Mayor. Okay, well, we'll bring it back then for discussion. Thoughts? Bill, your thinking?
I mean, I understand the owner's concern, and thank you very much for taking your neighbors' concerns into account, too. We always appreciate that. But I mean, my difficulty here is just the finding of the hardship, because it's really more of an inconvenience. On the other hand, I don't think it's a particularly big deal if the garage is in the front on that very unusual lot on that street. And I might add, there are, I think, quite a few houses in Ross that are in a similar situation, the garage is not in the front yard or side yard setback. Three of those houses are on my street. I own one of them. So, you know, there are plenty of houses, I think, here that do have a garage not in the setback. So those are my thoughts. My bigger issue really was the hardship. I don't want a slippery slope where suddenly everybody has a hardship. Everybody has a reason for more whatever. I mean, we'd all probably like something else on our properties, but we do have guidelines, and we do try to be consistent. I'd be interested in the thoughts of the other council members.
I agree with you. Is this really necessary? Is there a hardship here? So that's the issue for me, too.
Yeah, I kind of feel like the property would be much better utilized with the ADU in the back and the garage in the front, but I'm struggling to find the hardship that allows that garage to be in the setbacks in the front. And I worry about the precedent also. You know, I don't want to open up a big hornet's nest of other projects like this. Maybe we need to think about the implication of ADUs in situations like this, and maybe there needs to be different rules in this kind of a situation, because I think we're going to be looking at more and more ADUs, and so maybe it's something that we need to think about. But tonight, I have a hard time finding the technical hardship. Elizabeth?
Yeah, I agree. And I think that, you know, the town guidelines... And I think that, you know, the town guidelines, aesthetic guidelines do discourage against having garages with cars parked in front. And I think that this could set precedent. There are many houses with carriage-type garages in the back, and I could see where those could be very conveniently turned into ADUs, but then a garage replaced in the front. And I'm not sure that that's best for the town. I think that hurts the feel of the neighborhood. So, both because I don't think that there's a defined hardship. I guess to me, a garage right at the front, the hardship would be that the property goes straight up, so you can't put the garage up the mountain or go straight down. The house is basically built on stilts, so there really is no place for a garage except for a tiny little landing at the street level. Then I think that there's no choice but to put garages right at the street level. But I think that for decades, the town has tried to keep garages back, you know, not in the front, so that there's a more charming appearance. So both because of that aesthetic guideline and also because I don't see an actual hardship, I guess I would say I wouldn't want to approve a garage in the front.
Matt, do you have anything to add?
I think I agree with all of you. It's, you know, we always struggle with trying to, you know, promote the development of your land and landowner rights and understanding the dynamics of the neighborhood and the neighbors and what's best for the town. And here, I just know that street so well, and it's a very crowded street. There's, you know, a lot of people parked there. The teachers park there. There's not a lot of parking, and there's a lot of cars trying to move by. And my biggest concern was moving the garage. Right now, the property owner actually has a really nice driveway that they could put their cars on, and that would go away. And so there would be more cars on the street. And I just know that street already has a lot of impact with parking. And, you know, we always talk about trying to leave room for, you know, emergency responders to be able to get by. And so, for those reasons, I just don't see the hardship that I think we all, you know, would want to see in order to approve it. So, it just doesn't have enough merit, in my view.
So, it sounds like we need a motion to approve or adopt Resolution Number 2540, denying the project? Could someone make that motion?
You know what, can I just ask a question? Sorry, before we move to a motion, is there, and I guess this is more for Ben, is there a way, I guess, do we have to deny the motion? Or is there a way to send it back for revision? Or do you deny it, and then the applicant has a chance to revise and come back?
It's the latter. We have his application before you, and if he wants to make revisions, submit an application. Based on the comments he's heard tonight, he can do so.
Okay, so it would just be a totally new... I just want to make sure we weren't saying like, "No forever", but, you know, he was asking for direction so that he has that opportunity if we deny it. Thank you.
Okay, I make a motion to...
Adopt.
For adopt Resolution Number 2540, denying the project.
Second.
Mayor McMillan?
Aye.
Councilmember Dowling?
Aye.
Councilmember Kircher?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Robbins?
Aye.
Councilmember Salter?
Aye.
With a vote of five, the motion passes.
Okay. Moving on to Number 19, no action items. A, council correspondence, anybody? B, future council items?
Yes. I would like that we bring back the young presentation, young people's presentation about the tobacco. And I don't know if it's an ordinance or it's a resolution, but to have them on the agenda for the next meeting.
Second. Yeah, I'll join.
Okay, thank you.
I was very impressed with the presentation, and I do think we want to encourage engagement of young people in Ross in our civic affairs, so definitely.
What's the right wording for that? Because what would happen at the next meeting?
Well, they requested, they're requesting an ordinance to amend the municipal code. But I just wanted to address, Councilmember Dowling, you specified the next meeting, and the policy here is that I work with the mayor and the mayor pro tem to schedule it. And I just, so I just don't, I can't commit to that because what's also very important was staff workload, but we also have to make sure we abide by the noticing requirements, and they're more extensive, you know, for...
That makes perfect sense.
...this kind of stuff. So we'll get to it as soon as we can. And I also know that the youth group did have some scheduling constraints, and so I'm sure that they would want to be a part of, be able to be here. And I'm not sure when their breaks are and stuff, so we'll work on it.
Okay, that's great. They did give us a draft ordinance. I think Bill has it, so he can give it.
I have it in all, which I give it to you, Krista. Yeah.
Any other future council items?
And I'm sorry, who is the second person who?
Bill.
Bill.
Terri and Bill. Okay, thank you.
I have something. I'm not sure this needs to be an agenda item, but I thought I'd raise it. And it was a suggestion made to me when I was sitting out in front of the post office when we were greeting people before the council meeting, that we have a sign on Loganitis for traffic that's going east, where there's a stop sign, advising people who aren't familiar with this that the oncoming traffic from the way, going west, doesn't have a stop sign and can turn. And I don't believe there is such a sign now. I think there's probably a place for it. And it might, you know, it might be useful to warn people about that who aren't familiar with traffic in Ross. There is a similar sign in Dover, and I'd be happy to take a picture of it, that says exactly that, because there is a similar situation. And although I go over there all the time, a couple of times I kind of forgot, and I was reminded, you know, that, whoops, you know, the other side doesn't have to stop. And they don't, and they go right around that corner.
Thank you. I'll check with staff and get a response. I seem to remember that this has come up before, and I remember that there was a response, and our Public Works Director's already left for the evening. So, I'll follow up and get something back to you all about that.
Yeah, great.
Anything else?
Yeah, so just, I wanted to talk for a minute about the students that wanted to give the creek report. We were going to have it on the agenda, and then I saw the emails that you didn't want it on the agenda. But I really think we should still let them come and do the presentation. They, you know, I actually think it's useful for us to know what they're, what they tested the creek for and what's in there. So I don't know why there was such opposition other than like that people actually wanted to sit in the chambers and watch.
I think the concern, Matt, and I'm the person who seconded your request initially, I think the concern is that the, there's two concerns. The precedent, and every other group at Ross School is going to want to come and make a presentation. And the appropriateness of our venue for that kind of a presentation, it's probably more appropriate to be given to the school board rather than the Town Council.
Well, no, but it was, first of all, Terri supported the measure, but...
It was me.
But I, it was, it's on our creek. It's an analysis of like the contaminants. So I don't know what the school board has anything to do with this. It's like, our creek, and are we worried about the toxins in the creek? Or how do we keep the water clean? So, again, I think it's useful. We seem to be having all these student groups coming in here. It seems topical, and I don't know why we're so opposed to letting the school share their analysis, their scientific work.
I mean, you know, Matt, I mean, it's certainly useful information, though. I don't think it's new information. When there was, you know, when the flood project was coming around, that was one of the big reasons why many people didn't want the Flood District to open up Allen Park and have what they called creek access, because we all knew that the creek was dirty, that there were a bunch of toxins and chemicals in it. So, I mean, it certainly, I mean, it's good to identify, but maybe, I don't really know what the town can do about it. I mean, other than tell people what we've already shared in the past is that, you know, you shouldn't go in the creek because it's not clean.
If it's not an agenda item, could it be presented as part of the three minutes that somebody's got at the beginning of a meeting, where they could come and present for three minutes and talk about their project at that time?
That's a good idea.
Any resident can do that. So that might be, because I think it's a good idea for young people to be exposed to things like town government and to see how, in some ways, how it works.
I mean, so what I could propose to them is, hey, each of you gets three minutes, and you could do, you know, five of you can come in, and however they will, it'd be more time, actually. It'd be like 15 minutes, depending on how many kids talk. So, I mean, they have that, right? And I thought, again, they approached us. It's a science teacher. I think we're a small enough town. I know we all don't want to waste time. I just didn't think it was that horrible. It seemed like, hey, to hear the creek update from our little miniature scientists, and the science teacher wanted to share it, and the parents were obviously very excited to come and listen. I really didn't think it was that big of a waste of time. But if you don't want to do it, I can certainly tell them, you have free three minutes, and you can send, you know, representatives to go three minutes, three minutes, three minutes, and share the presentation that way.
I don't like that. That doesn't, that doesn't sound like a good solution. The three minutes, three minutes, three minutes.
Is there a second to Councilmember Salter's request to put this on the agenda?
Yes, yes, I think it's a good thing to have students, even if we can't do something about it, to have them come and feel that they're being listened to and that their research means something. I did this all the time as a student. It's how I got interested in government. I think it's really a positive thing that we should encourage.
Thank you. So, and when it worked, I know that the teacher had reached out to you for the dates. So Krista, if you, again, we could tell them, look, you got 10 minutes, max, and you're just going to present your findings, and they need to send the presentation ahead. And I'm happy to, like, deliver a very strong message of what, how much time they can have. So, thank you for your support, Bill.
Great, okay. Last is council member participation at the communications table, and I will be there for October. Meeting evaluation, Number 20. Comments?
Good meeting, great presentations.
Yeah.
Great discussions.
Thanks, Matt, for being with us on Zoom. It's never easy.
Was it 11 o'clock there, 11? No, it's 11.
Yeah, it's almost 12.
Get some rest.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I wanted to just say I thought the meeting, this was one of the best ones I've been in. Even though it was on Zoom, I thought it was really, thank you, Krista, for moving it along and keeping the presentation tight. There was a lot that we covered, and I thought all the commentary was very useful, and I thought we all sort of got to the right places together without it being too contentious. So, thank you.
Great. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.